And a commission, um, can we stand for the pledge allegiance? Mr. Brenman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is in its hands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Young.
It'll stay.
Oh, wait, one of them's me this time, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so I have to stand for that one.
Okay, um. Eddie, anything we should be aware of on this, or? Well, if you want me to point out hers. We had her in the wrong tax class.
Oh, that looks a lot better.
For her house, uh, that she lives in, so. We tried, I mean, you know.
I have to say, I did not catch you, Tara saw it. You know, so Tara is doing her job on behalf of the county. She's like, wait a minute. Yeah, she did it. I was like, what? You're committed.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve real estate exonerations presented by our sister this morning.
A second.
All those in favor?
You want me to get it, Sonny?
Yeah.
If the president doesn't sign.
Yeah, I think you should sign underneath, or Tom, yeah.
Underneath John, yeah, that's my one.
That's correct. Thank you, Eddie.
Yeah, for the record, if you want to just. Okay.
Now, these are consolidations.
Each of these are the same property owners consolidating parcels of their own property. So I move that we approve them.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was down there checking into. Is there fiscal benefit to it, or is this?
It just cuts you down from multiple tax tickets down to one. And like, you know, if you're on, like, if you're on home state exemption. And say, your original property was only a sixty and seventeen thousand dollars. The home that's good for one, you have to add, you then get the whole bit of the home, so that's the whole.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, payroll.
Make a motion to approve first half payroll payable on August fifteenth.
A second.
All those in favor? Vouchers and invoices.
Any question? She checked up. I looked, there wasn't many of them.
Woo, that's Peter Silver.
Yes. My motion to approve.
All those in favor? Okay, meeting minutes, I'm happy to report we're caught up. Thank the Lord. Got behind due to the elections. I'll go through these as quickly as possible. I move that we approve minutes for April sixth, nineteenth, twenty-fifth, May fourth, night, sixteenth and twenty-fifth, June eighth, sixteenth, twenty-ninth, and July thirteenth, twentieth and twenty.
A second.
All those in favor? And I'll sign it later.
Do you need that, Ruth? Share that, Mary.
That's messing me up, I'm a little awkward.
I know, who's there?
Okay, I move that we approve the estate settlements.
Second.
All those in favor?
She's not out over there. I'm just used to handling them over.
All right, we have a few minutes, Ruth. So the first thing was a letter to Senator Capitol that you requested. Okay, let's move back from the names, don't make the proportions of three. I'd like to just, do we have enough time to skip to the fire coordinator position since we have so many present? Right, is she? I assume that's why a lot of you are here, right? Don't want to keep them waiting. So, Gary. We're to you, the fire coordinator position. Well, why isn't on here? Are we going to advertise it, or? What's, what's the plan?
Plan was, Brad Hall group about to talk, please hiring deputy fire coordinator job. I would pay it over with the deputy fire coordinator.
Okay, and do we have a physician description for the deputies? I know you sent it to us some time ago, I just don't remember. Did you guys discuss this at your meeting that you all had with the chief and school?
I'll be sure with the math.
Okay, well, in that case, when are you guys leaving again?
Soon as the math is done.
How long?
Think the way you want, two more, one is. And Derry. He said something, is there another Tommy of the new, the few things? The few waiting orders as well. Okay, well then, he said another Tom.
Okay.
I know the other.
So. I personally, and I don't know about my company, I would like you guys to discuss these physician descriptions in that group that you have with the chiefs. And, and I'm fine if you are sending this out for them to take a look at and review and get some input before we decide what to float. Now, I like the idea that you're suggesting, but I just want, so what he's saying to me is a fire service coordinator position and then a deputy position, they're the position descriptions he's recommending. So if we could get those out to the fire association, and then maybe you guys can discuss it at your next meeting, maybe schedule that after the meeting, so we can get some input for it, I would feel a lot better about posting it. After we do that. That cool?
Yeah, that's fine.
My colleagues, John, did you hear what I said?
Yeah, I definitely agree, and I gave a copy got back to Mr. Kretchen.
Okay, so you're.
I gave him, I gave him my copy.
Okay.
Did you have both deputy and five thirty? Uh, I've got the.
Both in.
Maybe we could get a big table.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of like on the back, I have my.
There it is.
Some memory, memory of the story I want. We've done that working group. I know, she's interesting. You want my copy or? Steve has it, all right. Anybody else want my copy of it? All right then, well, I move that we strike that from the agenda until the working group gets a chance to meet and discuss it. And then Gary, if you'll just get it back on the agenda once that's ready, I do that.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, and let's go ahead and get to the Lions Club matter as well. So then I wanted to put up the two years. He was the first one in the city. Morning.
Morning. When you're with some representative favorite Lions Club. We're asking permission to place this black locust chicken. For health lawn. Uh, for people to relax, focus to, you know, eat your lunches or whatever on that. And you can see from the description, it's a total seven hundred or four hundred and seventy pounds when you put it all together. We'll assemble it and place it, you know, under a tree or if you have a, if there's a location you'd like to have it out there, we'll try to send blocks to put the legs on, so it doesn't sink into the ground.
I love the idea, I think as far as where we located and, and making sure that it's, you know, maintained would be the only, it should be so.
Okay, it's black locust, it's not going to block and stuff, it'll be treated. We're gonna, there's a discussion at the club, the inlay, with the favorite Lions Club logo on it and stuff, so. The final detail of the top, it'll city people, as you can see on there. And it does not rot, and it will be maintained.
If you guys are into, I think maybe just leave it to Sunny. Where, where she get, let our maintenance director figure out what's.
Sunny decided.
Where best to put it.
Sunny say about mowing around it and everything, Ruth, is it, is it good, but that's what my only question I have.
I'm not, it looks like, is it just moved, or are they attached?
No, it'll be attached, and it won't move.
They might be able to provide a gravel area, put it on.
I think you probably need something, do something like that, yeah.
Well, we were gonna put cinder blocks, you know, there'll be grass underneath still, that'll have to be.
Well, I think the.
That way.
For mowing, we're talking.
For mowing and keeping the grass.
That's the only question I have.
Yeah, but I mean, there could be like a little gravel area, you could put it on that and.
Yeah, we can get rid.
I move that we approve the request of whatever Sunny works out with the Lions Club. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, Matt, on there.
It's like I'm looking at the, you're right in front of.
Okay, we're at nine fifteen now, though.
Yep.
Yeah, she's in Chicago. Is Michelle on there? She hasn't texted me, she's having trouble. We can, we can get back to her. That's what it looked like to me, I thought we already signed it.
We actually signed it for the.
Okay. So basically, this is an order, county commissions have the option of whether or not to extend voting privileges, emergency absentee voting privileges to people who are in the hospital or in the person's homes, who aren't otherwise voting absentee, but who were like placed there last minute, you know, and weren't planning to be in the hospital, be sick and allow them to vote. We've opted to permit that, because we think it's important everybody have their vote. So all this is, is a, an order establishing that we are going to set up a process and have people in place to allow people who have emergency absentee, who meet those emergency absentee voting qualifications will be able to vote. So I move that we approve the order.
Second.
All those in favor? Notifying the executive committees. How many poll clerks, election workers, alternates? An emergency absentee ballot, people required for the election. And letting them know it's due no later than August thirtieth. Get to make a bunch of phone calls. Okay, well, I move that we approve the order to the party executive committees informing them how poll workers, et cetera, we need, there is a supplement.
Second.
All in favor?
And the last one, we're county clerk, is the two fiduciary commissioners, Ackerman and Paul Clay and Larry Vera, the appointed.
Well, they, they were the only applicants, and I know, I realize having just read the minutes from that meeting, that we did advertise for at least four. In case, my reasoning at the time was in case there's a conflict of interest, because we have such a small community here, that we might have wanted to advertise maybe to neighboring counties or something, so. So we may want to re-advertise just to try to get a couple more in our hopper. Um, in case, you know, one of those, like, odds are pretty good, but one of our local attorneys have represented somebody at some time. And, and we've had that happen in Florida a lot, so. But anyway, I mean that we approve, uh, Larry Vera and Paul Clay as two more fiduciary commissioners. And.
Second.
All those in favor? One move that we advertise for at least one more, because we still have full tissue on board, try to at least get one out of county.
I need to find out about last one. Because it's either one of you, Phil Tishy, the one you prefer.
We.
Or one of these two, so I'll follow.
Okay.
Because we're waiting to see.
Yeah.
Maybe.
We're at nine fifteen, we can get back to you.
It's horrible, looking up and seeing a dead. It's horrible, looking up and seeing.
I know that clock is driving me crazy. Put my hand up so I can see. Well, especially when it was like according to, and then I kept looking, I was, it's not according to.
Okay, so we have the Meadow River Brown Trail Consultant agreement, just to continue along with that. You were down there on the trail, it was actually progress.
Yes, progression, it looks good, I drove the whole trail.
We sent us a picture of you.
Yeah.
So, and this is just continuing with my.
Yeah, I don't have a clock, but. I'm making motion to approve.
All those in favor?
The last thing was Anthony, did you have a firing recommendation?
Good, Anthony.
We can do that for. We think that one's ready. Yeah. So. We learned kind of late in the game that we were paying county employees overtime to stay for outside parties such as political parties to use our conference room in here for their meetings after hours, and felt like that wasn't proper, because, you know, even though we allowed both political parties, or a lot of people in this county who are paying taxes, who aren't affiliated with either party. So we decided to craft a policy about who could use the conference room and when. And the nuts and bolts of that policy are anyone can use it during courthouse hours, just have to book it. But they can't use our equipment, because we're not going to be able to provide people to run the equipment to disrupt their workday to do that, but, but you're able to use your own next to the internet. Anybody else, the only people who can use it, also county-related organizations that have their own budgets, such as farm land protection, solid waste, are also going to have to use the changers either during hours or find their own place to meet after hours. Those without their own budgets, such as planning commission, border zoning appeals, those, we will accommodate those, because they don't have their own budget, and they're doing the county's business without their own independent authority. Those other organizations have independent authority that's independent of ours. So we did decide on one notable exception, an organization that does have its own budget, that is working on a very critical project for the county right now, and that is the Bay County Urban Renewal Authority. Because of how close we are to the sale of Wolf Creek Park, and because of the need to meet multiple times, as a result, we're willing to accommodate that organization to meet in here. There are state members participating in these meetings, there are people from the governor's office. So we've decided that that is an exception only until Creek Park is sold. Um, which we hope will be in the next further due. But anyway, that is the nexus of the letter, so it's just a policy letter stating who can use the county commission conference room or resources and under what circumstances. So, I move that we approve this letter, I edited it last night for a couple of changes, but otherwise.
A second.
All those in favor?
You can really squeeze that last thing on.
I've never seen him like that.
All right, now I have two things left for the Senator Capitol letter and solid waste authority. Okay, so, and I don't even know how this will work, but we had suggestions and discussions, our litter control officer resides. And we have considered, because we really don't have a need for solid waste authority, because we no longer have a dump, and we've been looking into whether or not we could get rid of that organization. I don't think we've found that we can, at least at this point. But we really do need a litter control officer, and we wanted to focus on the dilapidated housing issue in the county, we believe we've received some earmark funding from the Senator Capitol, wasn't it? For next fiscal year to, to go toward the dilapidated housing problem, but we've also discussed among ourselves and asked Ruth to put in the budget getting money toward it now. We're not going to be able to get where we need to be until we can fully staff our beautification the group that would deal with that stuff, to an extent, be able to create a land bank or that sort of thing that we need to do to address the dilapidated housing issue. So that's another project we're working on, is trying to fully staff these boards, if they may want to volunteer, let us know. Some of them have to have very specific qualifications, like a contractor, I know we need a firefighter on the, on the board. But discussion was whether to have litter control officer report to the commission rather than the solid waste authority, because the litter issues or things that are coming, those concerns are coming to us, haven't had as active a board as we wish we had on solid waste, although that makes with some of the turnover we've had. And, and given the housing project that we're planning to take on, I mean, we have always provided the benefits and that. Do you guys have thoughts on the litter control officer and whether the county should?
I thought, I thought it was supposed to be a county report, you're right.
Is it?
That's what I thought.
Angela, go ahead.
Now, I don't know, we played it for COVID, it says the county commission has the authority to create the board, and the county wants to have any, or to hire. But in perpetration of that code, I think, I think Ruth, I sent her a copy.
I think that we should have the litter control officer under the county. Because there's things that's going on that their board only meets once a month, and they risk it the end of if it requires more than one person say, hey, take care of it.
And even if they make.
Yes.
They may not have that.
So, I mean, that's my own personal thoughts that the litter control officer shouldn't work for the county.
So I did speak to the deputy director of Raleigh County. I had so I was always more than he's like, he knows over my brain, like, that's the problem. But what if the whole officers that they have is under, they are.
It's my, I agree, I would like to have a litter control officer reporting to the county for the reasons I, I just said, because of the the programming we're trying to launch to address our dilapidated housing problem. And also, you know, for those that are salvageable, maybe try to rehabilitate them into something that, you know, first time home buyers can afford to buy. Maybe working with SOWs or some other program. But anyway, I move that we create a litter control officer position under the county and advertise for that.
A second.
All those in favor?
Now, little control officer will go, still go to the solid waste meetings, they're, they're on the.
On the board.
Obviously, we're just happy to maybe come sit down with Ralph County and find out how they do what to find.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because another thing that we've been doing, and, and that reminded me, our intent to have solid waste authority on here, was also to address the fact that we've had county staff performing certain functions for that organization and for other organizations, and I just really have a high discomfort level with having dual report staffs with independent boards and county employees working on their particular things. And so I also wanted us to discuss whether we want our county personnel doing the books, and the books in particular worry me for outside organizations. We've already had that backfire on us when we had county employees very active in our U R A. But when the U R A's interests and the county's interests split, those employees were caught in the middle. And it wasn't fair to them, and it wasn't fair to the U R A or the commission. So. I also want to move that we discontinue any support of that nature to outside boards. Now, that's not to prohibit any volunteer work or anything like that, but as far as dual employment.
Much conflict.
I, well, I'm worried about the conflict of interest, that's, that's what, you know, was come up before, and we're just lucky, I think, that it hasn't since, like, we've been in the habit of trying to be helpful, but in ways that create conflicts of interest, and then, you know, and then when something goes wrong, everybody is left with their pants down. So I move that we discontinue our administrative, state administrative. So I move that we discontinue our administrative, state administrative support for any outside board. Well, the solid waste authority specifically on this. All those in favor? Yeah. I don't know if we do that for anyone else, but if we do, Ruth, can we get that on a future agenda? Is it farmland? Okay, I couldn't remember. If we do, let's go ahead and do that. And we need to give them notice to do letters and make sure they know. For solid waste also to advise that we're going to hire a litter control officer.
You are.
You are.
They take minutes for you, right? Take the minutes.
I don't think they do.
Jeff does, I think.
Yeah, Jeff does it.
Oh, Jeff doesn't need to, okay.
They used to, though. Right. So Senator Capitol letter's left. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is the New River Humane Society M O U. And next steps. We have been in negotiations with our council and council from the New River Humane Society to try to negotiate an M O U that will satisfy will ensure that the commission through its agent, the New River Humane Society, is satisfying the terms of West Virginia Code that we're required to do if we run and maintain an animal shelter. Michael, what is the status of the negotiation?
We have it right now. We sit here right now, but to know that you could do with the new rivers. If you want, I can provide a little bit of background regarding how we got here and where we're at. So a few months ago, the commission reached out to me to draft a new M O U and lease as well as to look at the West Virginia Code regarding animal control law. So a few months ago, the commission reached out to me to look at the current M O U that was in place with the main society as well as review the law regarding animal control officers and the county obligations and responsibilities as it relates to animal control and to draft and revise the M O U to ensure compliance with those laws as well as to make sure that the the M O U reflects the commission's wants and needs and duties with respect to animal control. We worked on that, came to an M O U that the commission approved and we sent it over to the New River Main Society for them to review. They retained counsel and between myself and their counsel, we met in person to go over the terms and conditions of the M O U, explain the terms, explain some of the conditions and solicit feedback with respect to the proposal. The humane society provided some feedback with respect to that, which we brought to the commission. There were certain points the commission was amenable to negotiating and revising and coming to an understanding with with the main society. There was some back and forth a little bit and then finally earlier this month, we set for kind of here the final three remaining issues. I'll go within a minute. And we set forth the commission's position on that. We requested that they agree to those terms or else we'll come here and decide the next steps. And so the three kind of remaining issues that that outlined, there's really actually there were four. And I believe we resolved one of them. So the first one related to entering or creating some sort of a payment plan for if a person has a dog that is picked up and it goes to the shelter and incurs significant costs. You know, over a couple hundred dollars worth of cost and that person has certain threshold requirements that they meet where they cannot afford to make a lump sum payment, that there would be some sort of repayment plan instituted. And we kind of went back and forth on that and in some of the the issues with that, but we basically, I believe, came to a fair agreement with respect to the terms and conditions of that. And I believe, well, it's my understanding that the main society had come to an agreement on that. So that was one of the issues that I think that through compromise there was a resolution. The second one related to the setting of fees for the care and disposition of animals. So under West Virginia Code, any animal that is picked up by the county either through running at large or doesn't have proper registration or otherwise picked up by an animal control officer and that is taken to the main society. By statute, it is the commission who sets the fees as to the fees and expenses. How much that that specific animal, how much can you charge, you know, for medication, reclaim, and ultimately, if you want to adopt the animal out or give it out because it's gone through the statutory period where it's subject to be adopted out, the commission by statute sets the fee. And that's only for the animals that are picked up by the main officer. So if somebody, if it's an owner surrender or the humane society or the animal comes into possession of an animal by some other means, that's not the commission's fees that they set. It's only animals that are physically brought to it by an animal control officer. And there were some questions and disputes over what those fees are going to be. And the position of the commission is the commission does not have the sufficient data at its as it stands right now to set those fees. They would, the commission would like to have an open meeting where they're presented with the data, how much are the actual costs? How much, you know, and kind of look at those issues through an open meeting process and then set those fees. It's my understanding that the main society wanted those fees set prior to executing the M O U. However, the commission, again, is not in a position to set those fees at this time. We just don't have the data, the information to even logically set those fees, which have to be reasonable under the statute. So that issue kind of remains disputed. They want the fee set prior to signing the M O U. The mission wants the M O U signed and then at a later will will set those fees. In conjunction with those fees, it was discovered that, you know, those fees are supposed to be collected and returned to the county to go into the dog and kennel fund. And the dog and kennel fund is a fund set up by statute and there's very expenditure that can be made with the dog and kennel fund. Well, the commission has not received funds from the main society to go into the dog and kennel fund since like July of twenty twenty. So, you know, these fees are an issue and they and it needs to be resolved and it appears there's no resolution on that one. The the next issue, and this is the big one, I think, and this is really where things have fallen apart is the commission has requested in the M O U that the main society accept any and all animals that are brought to it by the animal control officer. If there is an issue where the animal shelter cannot house that type of animal or have run out of space that the animal shelter would be required to enter into M O Us, memorandums of understandings with third parties to collect these overflow pipe animals or specialized animals that are seized or whatever through an animal control officer, main officer. Again, it's only for animals that are brought by the animal control officer. If if John Q Public wants to surrender their cow to the animal shelter, the the M O U doesn't cover that. That would be in the full and sole discretion of the animal shelter or the main society as to whether to accept that animal. But if an animal is brought to it by an animal control officer or law enforcement official, the shelter has to have in place an ability to take that. There's a number of reasons why. That has to be done. One is if it's an animal being seized related to a cruelty case, the prosecutor's office has chain of custody issues and they want to make sure the animal is they know where it's at for criminal prosecution. On top of that, under statute, if the county seizes an animal, they're responsible for the care, custody and control of that animal pending its disposition either through adoption or whatever other means. And so that it's the county's duty and obligation to house these animals brought by the humane society, if they're brought by an animal control officer, main officer. And so therefore, mission cannot budge on this point. There has been issues with that this is a dispute where the humane society does not want to agree to that position for their various reasons related to some of their internal issues with maybe they're not housing, maybe they disagree with why an animal being seized or brought by a main or animal control officer, maybe. And so they're not agreeable to that position. And obviously, that's a position the commission cannot bend on as it's a statute legal duty to have care and custody, control of these animals. And then the bio issue relates to minor maintenance and brass cutting. The humane society has requested the commission provide for brass cutting services either through county employees or through the day report center and the commission cannot agree to that based upon, one, the day report center and there's a number of issues where they can't, you know, bind the day report center to be the brass cutting entity for the for a third party. They can't contract on behalf of the day report center. So there's kind of a legal issue there. And number two, there's practical issues with supervision equipment, things like that that relate to the day report center staff being contracted to perform that service. So that that was not something that the commission could legally or practically agree to do. On top of it, as for providing county maintenance staff, they're stretched too thin right now to to have to add another stop on their brass cutting circuit. So the county commission cannot agree to that. However, as kind of a compromise, I was, it was suggested to the humane society that they contract that service out and when it comes time for budget presentations, the yearly budget presentations to present that that issue for the commission to consider perhaps budgeting money in their operating the budget. I'm not saying the commission would do that, but that could be a potential cut comeback with respect to to those services depending on how much they cost and they could solicit volunteers or things like that. So that that's where we stand. Frankly, the the main issue relates to the acceptance of animals and as a matter of while the the commission cannot budge, they they have to have arrangement place for those animals. And let me just take a step back from the broader picture is this animal shelter is something that the county commission is permitted to hack under statute. They're permitted to operate an animal shelter. And the county commission has decided to do that. Also, under statute, they have the discretion, they may contract with a private organization such as the main society to perform the services for the county as it relates to those shelters. So this contract is really setting forth, you know, legal duties that the county has and allowing a private entity to do that. If the private entity is not willing to take on those duties and obligations, then the commission's going to have to figure out something else to do. That's, I can answer any questions, but I think that that pretty much encapsulates the picture of where we're at. And so as it stands right now, there is no executed M O new M O U or lease. And it's up to the commission to decide at this juncture if they want to, you know, you have options. I can tell you now or we can go into executive session for legal advice on your options, but that's up to you with respect to that.
Do you guys want to go into executive session for anything?
I don't, do you? I mean, I understand, no.
I do have a couple of questions. So I do want to mention though, Ruth looked up with regard to the dog and kennel fund reimbursement. How much we've been reimbursed since July two thousand nineteen to present, and it was one thousand sixty dollars. So actually, while we thought it was July, and I think that's the fiscal year we were working off of, February sixth, twenty twenty was the last payment we got. Prior to that, they were all in two thousand nineteen. So we have not received reimbursement for a significant amount of time. But at this time, I mean, we go into executive session to so I can address my questions about our status. Alright, executive session nine forty eight. So reconvening at ten fourteen, we're late for a public meeting, start at ten. In regard to public rezoning, request of Ken Craddock from a rural residential to V three, which is business tourism. One I don't like.
Mr. Craddock was not here for the year's work, so I'll speak to him perhaps. You guys should have got copies. They did manually approve to rezone. He has a big parcel that is his dad's, but he only eight point seven four acres of it. He does have a survey. He just isn't finalized as of today, but as we've had the paperwork from the surveyor. So the board knew that when they made their referendum, they was unanimous, so. You guys can accept planning commission recommendation to rezone his property or ask question. The contents of bill happened.
Yes.
Three happens right now and then hopefully seven or five.
With additional subject or?
He'll have to put a new subject. The one subject is. But he will put another one in. He has not planned.
You guys have any questions?
No, I don't have a problem.
Done?
No.
Alright, I I move that we approve Mr. Craddock's request to rezone his property from rural residential to business tourism.
Second.
Who's in favor?
I.
Just reading some comments from the Zoom. Hey Ruth, would you hand this to Michael? Alright. So we came back from executive session at ten eleven, dealt with the public zoning issue and now we're back. So we came back from executive session at ten eleven, um dealt with the public zoning issue and now we're back with the humane society M O U. Um we went into executive session uh for clarification for those on Zoom who didn't understand. To get legal advice, which is one of the reasons we are committed to go into executive session. So we maintain attorney client privilege. Um we had some questions answered. And uh and now we're back. So the bottom line, um at least for me, is that. We're in a situation where we're at a stalemate. The the West Virginia code requires. That we do certain things, we as the elected officials who get the calls from all members of the county and not just when. This issue is on the agenda about. Problems with animals or with the shelter itself. Um we have to address them. We are the customers. We are the ones who who determine. In addition to state code, what the needs of Fayette County are. Um we have discussed in many open hearings what our beliefs those needs are. Um but we acknowledge we are not experts on animals here. Um which is why for all these years, the commission has contracted out to the New River Humane Society to run the shelter. The problem is um as the customer, when we go to somebody. Who is running a shelter for us and we say, we need these things. Um and they say, no, you're only going to get these things. Then we're at an impasse and especially when some of those things are required by code. Um. And I I was thinking this morning about the thinking, well, if 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 we built a school. And we provided the school and we paid all the youth citizens. And we asked somebody to to staff the school with teachers. And then we had the buses delivering students to the school and school says, nope, we're only taking girls. You gotta do something else with all these boys. You have to figure out what to do with these boy students. Um because we're we're not taking boys, we don't have room for boys right now, we don't have bathrooms for boys. Um and we say, well, but but we asked you to run a school for all the children in Fayette County. Nope, sorry, only the girls. Um and then we find out, well, no, while you don't have room for Fayette County boys, you have room for Niff County girls. Um those are some of the issues that we're running into. Our animal control officers are the bus drivers in this analogy, so now they're stuck. You know, we are the board of education trying to figure out how to educate these children and the needs just aren't being met. Um so I feel like we have been eminently reasonable and I I read the comments that went on in Zoom. Um before, while we were out at an executive session and um there are a lot of misconceptions here. This doesn't just come down to funding. Um this comes down to creating policies. When I looked through the old M O U and the old lease. Not a lot has changed. We have implemented some additional accountability. We have asked that the experts in animals help us figure out how to deal with the very few cases a year. Where we get a goat or chickens or something like that that we identify places, so. We can have our animal control officers deliver those animals because we are not. Working with animals every day or working with people who work with animals every day. We rely on experts, whether it's for, you know. Property issues or planning and zoning like we just heard, we rely on experts outside of our own expertise. To help us get this done. And and when we say, this is what we need. In any other sense, if we have to build a bridge, if we have to fix the roof. Or the elevator, we say, this is what we need. If they say, yep, we'll fix the elevator, but it's only gonna work between eight and nine A M. You know, that is not the way the world works. It's not the way the world works and it's not the way this can work. Um you know, do do I regret that we couldn't come to an agreement? Yes, I do. Um because I I think I think the reasons we couldn't are not logical. Um. But we couldn't come to an agreement. And now I think we're forced to decide, what are we gonna do? Because we can't let it continue the way it has. Nobody's happy. Um you know, every comment I've gotten is about how, you know, we're not funding. Um the animal shelter and all these things. We've done a lot of things. We had a lot of complaints about the. Uh animal control officer and I I didn't share those complaints frankly, but. Um but we had a lot of complaints about him when he retired and we hired two more and then we got complaints about them. Um we, you know, offered to try to get day report out there to do some work in cage cleaning when we could. And nobody wanted him and then suddenly now it'd be okay as long as they mow the grass. Um then we increased the budget by twenty thousand dollars last year and um and the answer was. Um I'm disappointed, you know, so you know. We are taking from other things in Fayette County to give to this. We're not saying it's not important. But you know, it feels like, well, I believe that there is nothing we could do to make certain members of the board in particular. Happy. I mean, because I'm not, I don't think anybody's gonna hand you a blank check. Um and and that's, you know, that's just what it seems like to me and. Um I feel like we compromised a lot. What we did was ask for some policies. We had complaints that people were coming in and. Getting denied the opportunity to, you know, they would foster an animal and then decide they wanted to adopt it too late. It's already promised to rescue. Go in and play with one, wanna adopt it too, already promised the rescue. Um and and comments that Fayette County people aren't good enough to to adopt dogs. Um we've had complaints and and Commissioner Lewis and I bailed a poor dog out because its owner couldn't afford. To pay the cost that it it costs to have surgery after it got hit by a car and she wanted to get it out. And I was told if she didn't get it out by the next day that um it was gonna go out to rescue. And so, you know, her dog was not able to recover at home with its owner. Because she was on a fixed income and and she offered to make payments. Answer was no. Um so Facebook raised half the money and we split the rest just because we happened to be there. I'm sure Commissioner Brenneman would have pitched in too, but. Time was of the essence. We didn't want the dog to get adopted out. Um those are the types of things that are coming to us. And so what we asked, because a lot of times, you know, you don't have both sides of the story. One of the things in our M O U that we asked is like, let's have policies. What are your policies? About adopting an animal and and if somebody is denied, we ask that the reason for that denial be provided to the person in writing and to us. Um just so when somebody came and said, you know, they weren't fair or whatever, they didn't do this, that they could. The society could come back and say, well, we happen to know this person has a conviction for animal cruelty or something, you know, that we have something in writing, we can document. Instead of the suggestion that there is bias and people were flying by the seats of their pants. And that protects everybody. Those are the types of things that we were trying to build in with this accountability and frankly, had the relationship been a lot easier. Over all this time between the commission and Humane Society. All of it probably wouldn't be necessary, but there has been, you know, we're not getting any of the paperwork that we're supposed to be getting or reporting or money. Um under the last agreement and and we haven't been enforcing it, that's true. Um and you know. In looking at all the, you know, and my colleagues have been in in place. Longer than I have, but these are just complaints, the ones I mentioned are the ones that come up in the last year and a half. But they've been receiving criticisms for a long time. Um and I'm not saying they're all fair, but what I'm saying is, we tried to design this M O U to. Accommodate those, to create some insulation for all those involved, for us, for the humane society or whoever's running the shelter. That, look, this is, this is our process. This is why we made the decision and we can back it up. Okay, cuz this is our policy and didn't conform with our policy. Um and we do occasionally get animals. The prosecuting attorney has multiple times in this forum said. Um. That um he would reimburse from his asset forfeiture fund. The animals that have to be housed for criminal cases. Um he's made that clear. And he ha- have you received any requests for reimbursement to date, Anthony?
We've had, we've had some discussion.
So you've had some discussions now and I and I know that the new management shelter until budget time did not even, was not even aware that you had made that offer, so.
But we've had some discussions about that and there's been some other issues that were proven working on.
Okay, and and I know there's some tricky issues about when to release the animals and stuff. I know that have legal implications, but. Um anyway, we 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 have a bunch of willingness. All and 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 frankly, you know, the code does require. Um that the shelter. Take those animals, um regardless of of who they are or what kind they are in that type of case. Um once seized. But but the question is, what do we do when our animal control officer sees animals? And they go and the shelter says, no, not taking them. I mean, then, a- and it's not only just animal control in case anybody's starting to feel. Like, well, that's kind of their job too. Um it's our deputies and law enforcement who are coming off the road. You know, from protecting you, who are also bringing these animals in and then stuck with, you know. Trying to figure out, okay, now what? Um and and to me, that is just not tenable. We are the customers. Well, listen, you're out, you're out of order, okay? You're out of order. Um. So the answer is that we are the customers. We have set forth the requirements and the needs as customers. And the New River Humane Society has decided that it is unwilling to meet those needs. So in my view, we have to seek another solution.
I agree.
Um. What are your view?
Oh, yeah. When it comes to large animals, I took the last ones that came in to you guys. They brought them to me. Um also, I've I've taken a um over the eight, nine year period. I had a a few other large animals that were brought. No problem at all. Just uh. It would be nice if there was an M O U like we asked for between you guys and the farmers that's gonna take the larger animals. I I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said I didn't entirely support the one, he was talking with one, you know, at least one that I know.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead.
But uh, yeah, we we need to get this taken care of cuz we're legally bound and. We'll go from there.
I think we ought to do R F B. This might take care of the shelter and they can apply for it, they can.
I would like to know where you would, if you don't have a place to put four, two and six, you know, cat, where you would like those to come when they are dropped to where they could set. The word and.
Here's, here's a point. Now, we're not, we're not gonna, we'll give you a chance to speak here in a minute, but 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 we're not gonna answer questions because. I'm not an expert in animals. What we asked in the M O U for for you guys to do is. Identify a solution within your network of beings and and enter into arrangements with people who can. Care for cattle or care for horses or in the one case, the goat and the chickens. Um and and then the animal control people would take those animals directly to those places. But but what what's not gonna happen is they're not gonna go to holding over here at the jail. And they're not gonna sit in the back of a deputy's car. Um and they're not gonna be released wherever they were arrested from. That's that's what can't happen. And so, you know, we are relying on experts in in every realm that we work on, whether it's utilities or whatever. And and in this case, we're relying on Humane Society to come up with some solutions and come to us, but instead it's, you know. It's. Here's what we will do and here's what we won't do and tough stuff. And. We can't operate that way. We can't operate that way. We have a feral cat problem. I've sat here and suggested multiple times or asked. Why we can't do a stay near release because that's what everybody recommends we do. Um nobody can come up with anything. The foreign foundation money can only be used for, I guess, you know, one-legged cats. I, you know, I don't know. Why we can't come up with programming for that. I even asked if we could try to come up with programming and and even funding for microchipping if that would help. Um you know, but we're getting nothing. This was at a public meeting, so I can refer you. I actually have the note notes up here from it somewhere cuz I edited them last night.
I think it was even public meeting about uh Anthony using his uh funding also a year.
That was in there several, um that's several meetings including last year.
Yeah.
Um during the budget meeting, so um but anyway, so. So you were suggesting that we put out a request for proposal.
And give them sixty days. Longboard contract. On the M O U.
Well, we don't have a current lease or M O U in place, which is why we've been going through this exercise. But. Under the last. One, I think there was a notice requirement. There's also a list of. Equipment that belongs to the county that's there. Um. And and frankly, a lot of the stuff that's in the new M O U was in here, it just wasn't enforced. But. Um so is that a motion?
I make a motion to give them sixty days, longboard the contract, put R F B up.
Request for proposal to to see if anyone else is interested in running the humane sys- the animal shelter. Um and as. You know, I don't know what your last conversation with your lawyer is. I have a great discomfort level discussing this with you directly while you're represented by counsel. Especially as a lawyer myself. Um but I will say that, you know, if there is more negotiating in there. Um you guys are welcome to apply to run it, but but we're not those terms. That um our lawyer set forth on the record are not negotiable terms. I mean, as far as the fees go, we have to rely on those of you who are running the shelter to tell us. What reasonable fees are and why, but we have to have to do it in front of the public so we can, you know, justify it. We can't, you know, we know that you have to mark things up. In order to be able to, you know, afford to do certain things cuz it covers a lot of other things besides just the vaccination or whatever it is. But but that's something that has to be done in the meeting. You know, it's not like we're gonna say, you know. No, that's stupid. I mean, we might think some of them are exorbitant, but as long as you can prove it, I don't see us saying, okay. You know, this is where that money goes. This is how it's being spent. Um you know. Commissioner Oasis is a business fan. He understands that there are all kinds of costs involved in running the business that aren't just related to inventory. So um anyway, but but so I second your motion um to to give sixty days notice. Um to the New River Humane Society under the old lease and M O U. Um and to put out a request for proposal, which I hope the New River Humane Society will. Apply. All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Yes, give you uh three minutes.
And would you?
You'll come up to the.
Yeah, come up to the microphone, please.
That way everybody and out on Zoom.
I just think in this conference, you. Would be great. Very open to having that discussion and then just having all the number of that forever. And then as far as the issue with the air, any animals that are brought to our facility, we have got to be able to make every horse. Tell that to them, but just as you said, if you're free, we don't have a bathroom for boys. We're about boys when we're in the bathroom. You know, if we don't have a place to put a horse or a goat or a pig, we can't put a dog in there. So and the pressure of signing an agreement where we just have to figure it out. I'd love if you that aren't determined yet. We can't sign the agreement. And the number on it. So those are the main issues that are in front of my mind and why, where the stance still.
Okay.
That help in in figuring it out. Would be great. Some help in how to apply the microchip program and all those wonderful things. We do have a stay in the release program. It's, you just have limited access and capabilities and being able to do that, so.
That's a ventilator dwell, so they can't be within their stay in the release cats because we want to trap them. Within a reasonable amount of time, so they're not trapped for more than. A feeding or watering time, so they're not inhumated in the trap for twenty-four hours. The best to be spared. And then release. And then that's the public doing it.
A discussion back and forth, a reasonable discussion will be really appreciated, but that's.
Just the staff and as far as the microchipping. It's concerned. I'm typically the only one that can micromanage at this point in time and do certain things, that's why. And so we can get enough staff or if you decide to train or how.
Okay, and also it is a huge, huge part of our mission, not. And our fear is with all of the animals coming into the shelter that anything's going to come that. That was that is the reality of it. But that's right, we're no, and again, most animals are.
For the record, too. We haven't. Talked about this because there haven't been any decisions on it, but but I have mentioned to my colleagues that I've been talking with. Commissioners in Raleigh County and in in general researching trying to build a new facility. And maybe on the border, maybe somewhere off a like team where it was more accessible for volunteers and things like that. Something that's a lot more. Modern, doesn't have the problems, not by the shooting range, not on flood zone, you know, that sort of thing. So so, you know, we are actively. You know, doing things and and my colleagues were in support of that. I just said, y'all having a problem with me talking to Raleigh County about. See what we can work out with them because we do. Provide a lot as far as as far as Raleigh County's budget is concerned, you know, we do pay salaries. We do. You know, and and we have a member of our staff looking into grants for new buildings. So I'm like, how are all these other places affording new shelters? You know, so we have Ruth, that a member of our staff researching options there. Yeah, well, I know, and and so. We. I'm trying to strong arm somebody who's got some land over there right now to see if they'll donate it. And I'm also going to hit up the boy scouts and see if they have any land. Where we might be able to build something, so. Those are, I mean, finding out for the first time right now that I'm going to. Say something, but you know, these are things. I know Raleigh County has some similar issues, so I read about that in the paper. I talked to the commissioner. They were open to it. And we were trying to figure out who could afford what and where and that sort of thing. So, you know, their last idea was someplace that's. Not central enough for us. It was on their old landfill and place like that, but then I went back and I said, what about ours? It was kind of out in the middle of nowhere in Canard, so. That'd be as bad or worse than Beckwith. So, I mean, but. But that is, I mean, those are things that are in our minds. It's, we don't sit here and think, oh, you know, you guys are on. But we have to have a better relationship with whoever's running that shelter and and. If if you're willing to come in for another meeting and go ahead and, you know. While you're still out there. Make a presentation on the costs and stuff like that.
It might be in a different place.
Okay, well, we we do have sixty days, so what we can do is set you guys up. We didn't even have a. I don't know if you want to have a special meeting or put it in a regular meeting. What do you think, Ruth? For just for the. Fee setting. So we're going to need to set those fees one way or the other. Not full. Can you guys be available by the twenty-fourth for? Do you have somebody who can speak to what the costs are? Where we set the fees for. We can set a special meeting, too. We could we could pick a special meeting date. So if you want to get back to us with some possible dates, then I'll just. Text my colleagues and see which one we can do. Alright.
Say a couple things. I'm not part of the Humane Society, just. Yeah, hearing hearing that you guys are talking to the other counties is great because. They do amazing work and we have a major problem. Somebody lives out on Gateway. There's all kinds of cats around here and there, and we've done what we can. To help track them, get them fixed, utilize the facilities. Someone with pets, the pets are. Insane. It took a week and a half to get them. You know, just a basic checkup appointment, so. I feel like they're doing a lot. They're trying to stand up for what their organization. Is trying to do, which they've done an amazing job of not having to kill an animal seven years, considering the amount of things they bring in. And I appreciate that you took. The large animals in, and I feel like that also means you understand that that's a specialized thing. You can't just take someone that takes care of dogs and cats usually and. Throw a cow at a facility that probably can't handle a cow. So.
I don't want a cow at my house.
And they want a cow at their house because their house, just like your house, isn't set up for a cow. So. It's, I'm very much on their side as far as don't sign an agreement. That makes you do something you are not equipped to do. So if you want to have them sign something that says you have to take in. These types of animals and things. I also like the idea of not just. John taking in the larger animals just because he has a farm, but. Getting getting in that MOU. Whatever volunteers or whatever are willing.
Well, that's what that's what we asked is just that they enter into MOU so we have arrangements in place. Not that they themselves care for those animals. That's what we asked for, but. Because, but you know. A worst-case scenario is having me, you know, who knows very little about cows. Figuring out where to, you know, who's qualified to keep us, you know what I mean? So we're just looking to our experts to come up with some arrangements and ideas. In cases where they can't accept animals, even though by code they're required to, so we have to have those arrangements in place, so. You know, we're not saying they have to, you know, just tie it to a tree out back.
And I assume that there's some other. Group or something involved with the county that might have a decent list or idea of those people. That Humane Society could approach, does not be.
Brian Sparks is the conservation person for the county. You can contact Brian and Brian has people who will take horses. He has people who take cows. He has people who do all kinds of things. And I've told the previous people. There is people at the Humane Society to contact and no one ever.
So that's how you can find him. He's just right down the street in that office. So.
And then as far as the fees. I know that virtually they need to help with figuring out what those fees are because they're the ones executing all that. And then as far as looking back and saying, well, these animals, I'm assuming that the animal control officers keep track. And know what animals they've dropped off.
Yes.
Okay. So that could be more of a reconciliation that shouldn't be crazy as long as. You all have the records.
No, and also we've sent a letter to the municipalities.
We were supposed to give them up the reports on all that stuff, too. We never, we never got it.
My figure of course from the union side.
There's a lot of people, a lot are dropped off that aren't brought in by animal control also, but.
We have a record of ours dropped off. We don't have a record. That was taken. Supposed to have been. Dated to us every month.
But we did send a letter to the municipalities because we're kind of tracking where we pick them up to ask them to contribute. Because from the numbers we got in Brooke's presentation this year, at least half came from Oak Hill City Limits. You know, half of those dogs are a large number, and so Oak Hill has a huge budget. Now, we feel like. You know, the municipalities ought to be contributing based on the percentage of animals that we are picking up and taking care of in their jurisdictions unless they don't want. Our animal control officers to come in there and they want to do it themselves, but that's, and they want to, you know, find their own place to put them, but. But, you know, we have proposed asking for reimbursement based on the numbers, and we need to keep the stats.
From the townships.
Yeah, from the municipalities, which have their own budgets, but you know, Oak Hill has a huge budget and and is able to pay its police hire, is able to do all these things. That we haven't, we can't even afford to do at county level. And and it it doesn't pay, you know, for a fraction of of what, you know, we do even on the law enforcement side. The help over there, so. Anyway, so that's that's another thing. We have already sent that letter. I've noticed in the minutes I was editing, I didn't remember the status of it, but we did. Send that letter to them, so let them know that we were about to to start putting our hands out and asking for reimbursement, so. There are other sources of funding we've been seeking on behalf of the Humane Society to to feed this dog and kennel fund. There are lots of things that we've been doing. To try to make the situation better. But but we need help with these things, like these are the things that we don't know how to do and that we're relying on experts to to do for us. Figure out.
The grass cutting, it's not you, the tallying ends the length of the facility, correct? But we're not obligated to maintain that.
When you, when you rent a house, you cut the grass or does the homeowner cut the grass?
Thank you.
The agreement here is the homeowner cannot. Cannot provide the personnel to do it anymore. We used to be able to do that, but we have shortages all over and and we have people out with COVID. We have several hurts. The day report center does not have enough participants at this time. We've just been rebuilding that program. Maybe at some point. It might, but for the time being, I pay somebody to mow my grass because I don't have the time to do it. And that's what we would expect and have it built into the budget. So when it comes to us to say, here's what our operating expenses are. That would be a part of them. So, I mean, grass mowing is it, but we have been doing an extraordinary amount. We've been changing their light bulbs for them, all kinds of things that, you know, in my view, that we shouldn't be doing for renters, so.
Depends on how high it is and what type it is and all that.
Really, they're for us. It's bulbs. I mean, I've changed, and in my own pocket, changed these myself for the ladder, so. Anyway, did you have any other comments for us?
I think that's it, but it does feel, and and I read the comments too online and everything, and some people definitely get a little outlying. But a lot of people find this to be extremely important and think that they do a great job. And while we have, as a county and y'all as a commission, have requirements, you've got codes. Sometimes it does feel like you're not working with them quite as much. As you should.
I wouldn't say this.
That's, that's what I'm hoping for is. While you do have things you need to accomplish. You have a good organization that at times might have some leadership that gets a bit combative. Or some representatives that get combative. That's because they're passionate about it, and it's important to have people that are passionate about this. Helping this county accomplish something. That there's a huge problem and they're a really good solution. I know you already gave the sixty-day notice and everything before there was any kind of, so.
Well, they they can apply under the terms that we're advertising and and I hope they do. But, you know, a couple of things, I will say the employees there, i- it is the board. There are members of the board that have, I think, escalated things to a level. That is absolutely unnecessary. I think that there's a lot of, I'll just call it as it is, propaganda. You know, it's about money. The animals are going to die. No, that's not what it's about. It's not about a power trip. It's about us fulfilling our responsibility. To the people of Fayette County to make sure this job is done the way we believe in the statute process that should be done. That's what it's about simply. There's never enough money for anything, but we have been looking at things. For example, I've been trying to figure out how we can, with the National Park Empowerment, because I'm sure we get. Lost animals, pets from the park, too. Like, how can we capitalize on some of that type of funding that's coming down? So, you know. We are always thinking and looking and talking about what we can do. We're not getting a lot of help from the experts, though. And 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 that's, you know. All we're asking is, please, help us figure out what to do with these animals, you know, that we have to take custody of. You know, help us figure out what to do with them. And I think if we can get over that and if we can have this hearing on the fees and get that satisfied during the sixty-day period, maybe that will help them. Have more to work with. But but we definitely have to set a deadline on it. It's actually because we've been fooling around with this for a couple months now. And it's still not executed.
Keep it in the boy scouts rolling, because they. They're struggling right now, so I think that's a good place to go to, honestly.
They've been very eager to, they've been very eager to work with us on other things, so we'll see.
I'm going to say the facility is not too regular for the. You know that already. It's too far away from everybody. They don't have volunteers now like they used to. I think it was closer to. Then they could get more volunteers. Staffing is a big problem about, right? You gotta have, be able to pay people to work, avoid getting volunteers. My my dream was to have a rescue and do exactly what you said. Find a piece of property, then you can like rent it like crazy to get it set up. Now, brands down. You can't get salaries. You can't get operating expenses to bring, but setting up a new facility, yes, you can rent it. So keep us. Let's keep that in mind because it's very important, I think, to set up something new somewhere else with more space. More building and just make it more accessible.
That's more accessible. That's been one of our biggest problems, and I, none of us want it by the gun range. None of us want it by flood zone. So, but but, you know, just like everything, it's it just takes time, but it is something that we've been looking at, and I've I've literally had. Three conversations so far with Raleigh County about it. And a couple of ideas have fallen through and now I'm, you know, kind of regroup and decide what to do next. Maybe I'll approach Nicholas, but. Well, and I even thought for a while there maybe the bridge might have room out there, but you know. You know, that that had to go its own way and we, you know, it was already going to five oh one.
If you keep looking for property, maybe we can get it done.
Yeah.
The volunteers and the staff, I think, do a great job. People limitations they have. I would like to spoke before you did the sixty-day thing. They got their calls, but, you know, they are overworked and. Just. Love animals, all of them, love animals. I mean, they do.
So do all of us.
And that's great. We need to work with them, right? Thank you.
Alright, I think we're going to have to keep moving on the agenda, but thank you all for speaking and for coming. Yeah, the the ten thirty, the update we were supposed to get from Hospital Levine about our cop plan. Is being postponed at the request of NRG RDA, the New York Forest Regional Development Authority. Who hired Hospital Levine to do it. They had some concerns and wanted to address those concerns in advance of disappearing on the agenda, so we're going to go ahead and strike that from the agenda. And move on to Meadow River Rail Trail Bid Award and Construction Management, and. Okay, so do we have the bid? Oh, well, we already opened it, so we opened it last meeting. And we submitted those to our expert who was supposed to review them for. Some criteria and consistency and make sure nothing was untoward, right?
Yes.
And, um, then they make a recommendation and we decide whether to go, and just as a recap, the, the bidders were Dan Hill Construction. Came in at one point five million, um, A L L Concrete Inc. at nine hundred eighty one thousand. And change, Termon Morton Inc., one point two million. Yeah. So those were the three bids that came in, um, our expert at Chapman Technical. Said they were, they reviewed all the bids, they were compared to the requirements, um. And the review affirms that A L L Concrete is the apparent bidder who met all the qualifications, so that's a. Nine hundred eighty one thousand two hundred forty five dollars, um, based on that, I move that we award the contract to A L.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hey, Matt.
Yes.
What had you mentioned about construction management? I didn't get anything out of the round next.
Yeah, I talked to Roger this morning, he's still working on the updated proposal. Um, before the bid documents were put together, he has submitted a proposal for preparing the bid documents and construction management. And then a revised proposal for just the construction management, so we never received a proposal that was, um. For the construction management piece, so once he gets that, we'll be able to get Chapman Technical Group under contract to prepare the, uh. Contract for A L L Concrete and, um, move forward and, uh, get them involved in construction management.
Okay, our next meeting is the twenty fourth, will that work?
Yeah.
We'll just go through the construction management before. Okay. Okay, so, um, motion to postpone the construction management portion of that agenda item to the meeting on the twenty fourth.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Uh, hi.
Okay, so we, our next item is, um. Eleven thirty, public meeting, let's go ahead and, um, go to Wolf Creek Park, I don't know if anybody from the U R A is on. See, on the line or not, it's really long.
Go ahead and let Tom take a break.
Okay, let's take a ten minute break.
Thank you, John, thank you.
I could tell.
Nobody, it's a worm in a seat.
Yes.
Um, I, I already heard from Jeff anyway, I mean, I, I think. Yeah, there's nobody. I think I can address.
We took a break.
Let's go ahead and take a ten minute break. All right, we have about three minutes before the public hearing at eleven thirty, um, really, the Wolf Creek Park question, um. I know Jean is here, is Jeff on the, Jeff Proctor. But Jean had the answer to the, but my main question was, since given all the progress of Wolf Creek Park, just wanted to make sure that. The lawsuits between Rick Johnson and, and the U R A and, and Brad Wolf. Um, and, and the U R A is not going to interfere with the sale of Wolf Creek Park. Jean, do you have any, are you texting Jeff?
Um. Well, last time we talked about it, before we'd been answered, there was, uh, Monday, Tom was there.
And, and the, and the belief was not, or yes?
My brother, it's not.
Is it, is it part of the same, because my understanding was those parcels where Brad and, and Rick and all of that that's in the suit weren't in a. Part of the original development plan and all that stuff anyway, like you guys kind of sold it after.
Yeah, they're, they're within the boundary of the Wolf Creek Park property, but, um, there was no plans. You know, Rick, we're gonna use this property long ago, when the pop down, this property, down back when it was first. I mean, people been running wild on timberland, timber pole land forever, then, um. And so, and then, uh, yeah. So, if you, if you drive in there, you see where the two entrances are, and Brad's shop, and what's there, you know. One, one piece is up behind there. And the other one, first entrance up behind there, and that hole is where Rick built, uh, zip line. And cut trees, and some long county property, you know, originally what we were trying to do was give them the property. This is not a laugh, this whole thing. We were, we had, we spent money and surveyed it, and we said, hey, we want everybody to prosper here. You know, maybe you knew, maybe you didn't, we don't really care, we're not getting property, we just want to do. And we surveyed, and so that piece up above. First place, for zip line, and then, um. The part of, up above Brad Wolf property, there's this little tip where, uh, Rick had put in some structures with paintball for it and stuff, you know. And some other stuff right up here, and we said, we'll just do this and this. You just take them, because we got new useable, it's just clean, you know, clean things up, and. Predictably, Rick saw an opportunity. For a little something else, and he said, well, how do I, can I have this four acre stood? Down the slope, you know, it's a slope, it has a really nice old road bed, that reverses the slope. And we're like, what do you want for it? So I went for a buffer, you know, I just want to have a buffer around me from other use. And we're like, yeah, the buffer is, oh, great, you know, we all know what the word buffer means, it means buffer, means there's nothing there. Right, it's a natural, undisturbed buffer, and, um, so. The first draft of the agreement back for losses from the trail, you know, it was kind of like, we had talked about, if we can do some trails. Then we'll take you that to the spot, yeah. All when it's a further, you know, you know, your people can walk through the rural, find these trails and all that, and, um. And so, in the agreement, it, it didn't say buffer, you know, it said. I forget exactly how it was worded, um, but, uh. And we said, well, we just need to verify this, you know, nothing can happen on this property. But the buffer. And then you add four acres, it's gonna be a buffer, you don't have a problem with that, you know, at the end of the day, county doesn't want to hold any of it. Any, any of that, and he, and that's really when things went sideways, and he's. And he kind of pitched a bid, said, I don't want to be subject to your covenants, restrictions, blah, 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 it's my property, I don't want you to, okay, please. It's our property right now, and you want to get it to you as a buffer, and that's when things collapsed. He wanted that property green clear, and all he could figure is he wanted to put a road, like, like, you can lock that road right now, the road is not being maintained. Really, it's in the relationship, so that's all we're shooting, and we're like, you have to agree to do nothing on this way.
So that's.
And then we said, well, we'll just take that back, and you know, it just all kind of fell apart. And, you know, it was kind of pretty, huh?
Um, okay.
And so. Those two pieces of property, there are two exhibits in the, uh. In the personal, and one is Exhibit A is the property that's going to be transferred.
Mm-hmm.
The blue water, and Exhibit B is the property that's not. And we have the description and survey that Westwood with Philip over there, of both of those pieces. Which can vary, you know, Wolf Creek Park is not fully covered, and that's just, uh, the reality of all this, you know. All this giant timber back, that back line over there, they go from like, funny hollow over the Wicked subdivision. That's a long straight line, about thousand feet, water, um, that's not certain. So, I don't know how you, I'm not sure transaction, obviously, the county bought it from Burrow and out there, everything. But we can carve it throughout, if it's not part of the contract, and so my impression. Is that it's not gonna have any back on it, I mean, there's, the, the, we spend this thing, you know. Where you've kind of been looking for opportunity, maybe act like that, as soon as the property goes under contract, Tom brought that up to me on Monday. Um, I'm not sure how that works, but maybe some of the people have a claim and some goes under contract, it's just been a, they can affect that.
Is there, can it, Michael, Anthony, can something like that, that be, um, if, if it doesn't involve the property, can they file? That on a piece of property that is not involved with their property, just because. Yeah.
I mean, notice the list pending this file, any pile. Real estate at issue is subject to litigation. I mean, but you can't file it on property that's unrelated to it, correct? I mean, it has to be, probably that it's subject to the litigation.
And so if they have cordoned off those slot, those pieces of property, then it cannot be attached to. Anything else to do with Wolf Creek Park.
What do you mean by cordoned off?
Well, I mean, like, it's not part of the sale.
Can the, can the corporation or anything else be responsible, or any part of the, of corporation be responsible? Uh, with the list pendants? I mean, uh, you might section off a, a, a partial property, but I'm saying corporation, but the U R A is not corporation, I'm just saying corporation. But could somehow the list pendants, uh, fall against or under the U R A and remaining property?
Property the U R A owns.
Yeah.
And not, so he's wondering if they can encumber, because lawsuits against the U R A, if it can encumber property, not of the obvious.
That's correct, yeah, they, they have no right to encumber that property, uh, that's not, the data are not making a claim under. And it's my understanding, and again, it's not just from what Gina said, with, actually, I think right in Exhibit B is excluded, but I'm. Fairly optimistic, Blue Water, they don't want that property anywhere, right, they understood that it was subject to a lawsuit. So with that property not being part of the transaction between U R A and, uh, Blue Water. That litigation would have no effect now.
What about damage?
Well, I mean, it, it, the, yes and no, I mean, uh, you know, if, if. The U R A is ordered to pay damages, um, but as a result of that lawsuit, um. They have to pay the damages now, they, I, for them to affect that, so, um, this is the common rule of way to say that I. Don't think that that's an issue.
Okay.
Because, because they have to get a judgment, they have to, uh, the U R A would not have to be able to satisfy that judgment. Then they would have to get an action that they would be entitled to put a lien against property owned by the U R A, and I mean, that's. You know, this Blue Water deal should be done over within the next thirty to sixty days, that litigation, that process is not gonna be done.
Okay.
I- in enough time, so, yeah, yeah, I mean, again, that's a common.
Time, time, okay, I understand, okay.
They should not be in this.
Well, I, I'm gonna have to skip for a minute because we're, we're, um, late on our public hearings, so I want to let Prime Parsons come up and. Talk about the annexation.
This is fascinating, I haven't, uh, should have talked about the rule of show his case.
Don't you miss attending these meetings all the time? So let's talk about the Smithers annexation, the empire, the growing empire of the Smithers, I know Scarewood is part of Smithers now.
Yes, um, give me a moment to, uh, technically feel the. Good morning, everybody. I want Christmas. Might say, well, why did you seal it like that, and then I would introduce you to, uh, my friend, Harris from India. Um, I don't do that, there'd be cheaters on him. All right, thank you, uh, first of all, I have a handout for you all. And, um.
I'll share one up here and you can burn, you can hold on that, oh, you have one?
I have one, okay. So, um. Very good through, uh, a handout with you, good morning, if you don't, uh, know me, I think it's appropriate for the record, at least. Uh, for anyone who's watching, my name is Brian D. Parsons, I am city attorney with the city of Smithers, uh. I come here at the behest of Town Council of Smithers, and particularly, uh, Mayor Anne Cavalier. Uh, we'll tell you all, um, she was scheduled to be here, uh, we had thought, um, that might be her calling right now. Um, we had thought this was originally set ten thirty, uh, she had an important, uh, grant. Uh, she, she had to attend at eleven thirty, uh, so she could not be here, but it's, uh. No disrespect or a comment on the lack of importance of this, she just can't be two places at once, um, if you look at the first exhibit. This is, um, to comport with, uh, Westy Code, uh, Chapter eight, dash six, dash five. Which sets forth the requirements that are required by petition, uh, to incorporate, uh, the ten. Uh, essentially plus acres of property that extend up, you know, from Hollow, Hollow Road. Uh, that description is set for specifically by survey, um, in, uh, that exhibit. You'll turn to the next exhibit, this is a map, uh, if I could orient, if you turn your book like this, uh, that would, I think, orient you. Uh, looking up Hamilton Hollow, uh, as if you, you're, uh, backward towards the McDonald's. And you were facing, uh, the road to prison, so, a- as you can see, um. This proposed adjustment would follow, uh, the state highway up and through these residences until you get to the area. Uh, that is commonly referred to as, uh, the ball field, the, uh, the old UKV, uh, ball field. So this property encompasses all of that property, uh, which would lie in the, the flat. Of, uh, of the hollow there, and so, if you're looking at, um, the, the line on the left extending. Uh, away from the road and, and running on the, the hillside property, I will tell you. As that property lays, that essentially is where, uh, the ridge takes up and, and becomes essentially. Uh, property that can't be developed, a property that, uh, has no present.
There's a little creek right there and then the hill right there.
There is, and it shoots up dramatically, and I will tell you also, if you'll note, at the top of that ridge roughly is Kanawha County. So, on the backside of the spine of that ridge, uh, you're in the adjacent county, uh, this, so. I think the, the question, uh, that would be fair for the commission to ask is, or so, uh, so why, why, why are we, why are we here? Um, there are, uh, two concerns or two things that the city seeks to, uh, accomplish. By incorporating, uh, this property, one, historically, um, that ball field has suffered. Uh, from a lack of municipal services, um, trash, uh, fire protection. Leaf protection and what have you, I will tell you that, uh, COVID, um, has essentially disbanded the, uh, UKV littlery. Um, and, uh, that property is not being maintained, so, uh, for it to continue to be. In a condition where it, it could return to this use, and we think it should, uh, someone needs to maintain in the meantime, unfortunately, city. Uh, will do that, um, and then our hope is that at some point, uh, baseball can return there. Uh, and we can provide necessary services that, uh, that, uh, have been required in the past. Going on up, uh, the, the road past that property is a, is a flat, uh, landing there. Uh, that there are, there are plans, um, with grant funding to place a, a wealth center or a business. And I've taken, uh, the opportunity, uh, if I may, um, to show you some, uh, exhibits. Um, this first one, if you'd like to take a look at this. Um, this first one, if you'd like to take a look at this, this is a mock-up or proposal uh, for what that visitor center would look like. Um, and this is all part of, um, a, a development scheme, um, to develop, uh, what is called Quadrant North Two of, um, the Upper Canal Valley, um, tourist development project, to develop a, a project called Mammoth Preserve. That's shown in this exhibit.
Yeah.
I'm sure you all.
Oh, yeah.
I, I thought Ben might want to look at these while you're here because you were just talking about these.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, yeah.
So I just, um, you know how I am, Lisa, I was going to tell you, everyone knows something, but then when I figured out, I think, oh gosh, I'm going to first of all, there's this stuff. So, um, and this is a, this is a mock-up of how this property would tie into the overall development, uh, tourism strategy that, uh, exists in, uh, in Montgomery, Smithers, and Dog Bridge. If I could, um, direct your attention to, uh, the next exhibit, uh, that is the ad pre, uh, from the paper, uh, which complies with, uh, what's the legal law in terms of notice? And then the, uh, the last requirement that I think, uh, I need to point out specifically is the, uh, the statute was amended, uh, recently and requires that, uh, all of these notices be physically placed on the property in five places. Um, and so, uh, the city workers were good enough to go post these at the five separate places on the property. And I had them take a picture, uh, although it didn't succeed as I would like, uh, something to prove the date they were posted. Um, I will say that, um, a piece of paper that's the, uh, person's holding their hand, pretend to be evidence today. As you can see, uh, at least, um, some of these are, which may be near the outfield of, uh, of the ball field that I mentioned earlier. So, um, I mean, we, uh, we do feel that, uh, it is in the public's interest, um, to, uh, to for the county commission to grant this, uh, annexation. Um, there is no, um, financial motive for, uh, the city. This isn't, uh, I'm not trying to annex, uh, part of some major highway to run radar or some such thing. Um, and, uh, we're not, uh, pulling in, uh, trying to pull in some business that is resistant to this, uh, to capitalize on V N O taxes. Uh, I will tell you that Boone East Development Company, which has transferred the property in question to, uh, a company called Contura Energy. Uh, they, and I believe there's a letter, uh, in the file that evidences their support of this, they are the sole private property owner that's affected by this. Uh, if the county commission were inclined to grant this, uh, they will deed the property, uh, to the city. So it is in private hands now. Uh, if the county commission grants this, it will, uh, promptly be transferred to the ownership of, uh, Citizens of Smithers.
Are these homes on either side of the road already part of Smithers?
No, they're not.
Straight up the middle of the road.
Right up the middle of the road.
Well, I see that, but, okay.
Under the new, under the new, uh, statute, uh, it would require virtual, um, unanimity among the property owners, uh, to come into the city. We haven't made inquiry of that, uh, there's been no expression by them to come in. Um, I can tell you that's not, uh, an agenda or a future motive. Uh, obviously, they want to come in, um, you know, and we could afford, uh, to provide service to them. Uh, I don't know that the city would deny it, but, uh, that's not an interest, uh, of the city at this time. Really, the, the motivation is to, is to, uh, further, uh, develop and promote the Mammoth Preserve and get this property to, uh, that's tied to grant funding to put the welcoming.
But this does include the road that goes between those homes?
Yes, ma'am, because it has to be contained in this.
So I, I was just thinking about, hey, like law enforcement issues that might happen.
Well, I will tell you, ma'am, um, if, if there's a call for service in, in that county residence, we're already responding under M O E of the county. So, um, you know, those people are getting the benefit of living next to Smithers, uh, in terms of police protection. Because we'll respond. I know, uh, there was a shooting up there two years ago and, and our officers got there first, um, and, and held up things until the, the county sheriff's got there. We're, I mean, we're, we're good neighbors, uh, we, we want to do that, but we don't want, um, we don't want more, uh, road to run radar on. Frankly, we've got Route Sixty, we're good. I don't think Smithers has a reputation for being speed trap, but I could, I could.
Well, no, I wasn't, the speed trap wasn't the issue, I was just wondering about police jurisdiction and that sort of.
Sure, sure.
Anthony, do you have any questions?
Um, I want to compliment Mr. Parsons, this is nice.
Compliment Theresa Dorson. Well, I don't, I don't.
Kind of looked like.
Yeah. The, the snow in the background, that's a good sign. Well, let me also tell the commission that, uh, Mr. Silvery was very helpful to me in, um, in doing this, and I think I finished the job, he started, so.
Right, I was wondering how the former Smithers City Attorney felt about the current City Attorney. You guys have questions?
Counselor, the, uh, Union Hall is used by the county for voting. Is that going to still stand in that area?
Of course, yeah.
Okay. Want to make sure.
All right. Well, I do think you did a good job.
Thank you.
I move we approve the annexation of the, um,
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. I think it necessitates an order. Uh, I'll prepare that order, uh, for you all for you. Also, thank you to, uh, Ruth, um, she was very helpful. Keep one of these for your record, please, put in a minute. Um, but, uh, thank you as always, and, um,
Yep, thank you. You gotta look at them, you gotta take a picture of them with your phone.
I'll take one while we help.
We, so we were just finishing up, I, I think we got the questions answered, um, that, uh, I wanted to have answered today on Wolf Creek Park. Trying to make sure nothing would get involved in the sale. So is there anything else for Jaleese? Um, we have Senator Capito's other, right?
Well, we need to get it printed, I'll have to get it, get on his computer and print it.
Okay, so, all right, let's just take a ten minute break. And we'll close up. All right, back on the record, just to address, um, a letter of appreciation to Senator Capito now. Amy, I'm so sorry about this, but I don't like how crammed in it is, how there are like two pages.
We can do two pages.
Nice and spacey, but let's go through content. So, um, this is basically a letter from the commission that asked Amy to write. Senator Capito showed up in Fayette County multiple times just in the last handful of months on our behalf, put in for earmarked funding and got it for us, for our priority sewer, um, project, stemming from Anstead. So it basically says, we extend our deep appreciation for our recent visits to Fayette County, thereby emphasizing the importance of the positive events occurring within the borders. Uh, since the designation of the park, we've experienced a surge in tourism, national, international recognition, and economic development. And I have to credit Amy, she puts some very good language in there. All I did was massage a couple of things, but this is largely what Amy wrote. Um, having our U S senator and high level elected representatives attend events and meet with local officials, constituents, and business owners demonstrate your commitment and support to the important next steps in our growth. Your present announcement for the historic Fayetteville Schoolhouse's redevelopment reinforced our message that the future of tourism in Fayette County is strong. Your meeting with the executives of the North American Headquarters for International Mining Company Game Well Engineering telegraphed an interest and commitment from the highest level of government to bring global industry in West Virginia. You reinforce this commitment by seeking earmark funding to upgrade and extend infrastructure to the location along the Route Nineteenth corridor where Game Well and others, Fayette County hopes to attract, will seek to build and expand. Your, uh, decision to appear at Cathedral Cafe to record a segment for the PBS series, The Open Mind. Oh, Amy.
We got a typo?
No, there's a lot, this is that Google documents.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, here, okay, I got it, I got it. To record a segment for PBS series, The Open Mind, so it's a national food. At Fayetteville's Cathedral Cafe, brought national attention to one of our local businesses, highlights the importance of local businesses. My edits didn't come out of this, so it's still a little, um, national intention. And highlights the importance of our local businesses. Um, yeah, there's a lot of stuff I took out, moving around, it's still in here. Anyway, I want you guys to know the content so we can approve it and then we get it, you know, with it. On your upcoming visit to the new W Z T S, uh, office in Montgomery and availability of your representatives, uh, events such as Montgomery's pure dedication and providing mobile offices in the county. Allow our residents to freeze access to your services. Each of these gestures prove your firm commitment to helping this long neglected area realize its potential within our great state. Truly appreciate your attentive, teniveness and commitment to the people of Fayette County. We value your leadership and look forward to working with you as we diversify our economy and bring prosperity back to Fayette County and the New River Gorge area. Yeah, it, it, it didn't, it didn't accept the edits.
Okay, I'll fix that middle section and get it on two pages, then I can bring it back to you for.
Okay, we, uh, can we just, um, yeah, we do need the signees in person. I think we need to skip to, um, but anyway, um, you know, I just, I felt like, I just noticed, like, I started seeing it, and she started showing up and showing up and showing up, and I'm like, I have not seen anyone else show up like that, not a single other one, um, at any level of government, showing up that consistently at every little thing.
Is she supposed to be here tomorrow?
Is she?
Tomorrow or Friday?
I think it's Friday.
It's Friday? But the game well.
Again, she's coming back?
Yes.
Was that Carol Miller?
No, that's, that's Carol Miller. Is it Carol Miller? Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm going to be in, uh, watching Tone Loc and Vanilla Ice in concert. Tone Loc and Vanilla Ice. Ice, ice.
Well, are you serious?
Serious.
That's right, we are, we are that age, you know, we're still good at those.
So I, uh, so I moved that, uh, we approve and send this letter to Senator Capito thanking her for her support.
That's actually a good.
All those in favor? Uh, I think there is no further business, am I correct?
You're correct.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all right, we're adjourned.